For those on Zoom, we'd like to welcome you to join us. And I prefer that you keep your phones muted during the time of our public forum. And beside the public forum, if there's anybody who would like to speak in public forum, you can unmute and speak. First of all, we'll do the little poll. Ryland Nykors.
Chris Shields.
Nancy Quimby.
Arnold Cruz.
Laurie Novak.
Thank you. This evening is the first thing on the agenda is a public hearing for truth and taxation. Our tax levy that will be voting on further in the agenda. It's a flat rate from last year, 0.3689 is our total levy rate. The total levy number is $898,052. So if anybody would like to speak to the truth and taxation resolution, please step forward. If there's anybody on the phone that would like to speak to the, on the public hearing, you're welcome to do that as well. A second call for a public hearing for the truth and taxation. And the third and final call for the truth and taxation. Seeing none, we'll close the hearing at 6:37. Next item is our agenda. And I would like to amend the agenda. There's three things that I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. One is to include item number five under the personnel committee. And this is an outstanding citizen award selection recommendation by the outstanding, or no outstanding citizen award committee. They have a couple of recommendations and that was, you should have a copy of that. It came out this afternoon. It should be on your desk with a single sheet. It's like this. It's reviewed by our, Chris Shields is a council representative along with Skyler, Edensnight, and Bo Hallenberger. And so they have a recommendation for candidate A and B, and we'll vote on that a little bit later. The presentation will be in January. So that's item number five. And in the, under the fire and under ordinances and resolutions, we have a resolution 2020-21, which is a resolution that was proposed last night at the Fire Relief Association. They donated $15,000 to the fire equipment fund. So we'll add that under F3. And the last item is to move up the draft version of the feasibility study on the water and sewer to move that up from L to right after the ordinances and resolutions. It's a, it's a good discussion that we need to have about that. So I want to move that up a little bit earlier on the agenda. So with those three amendments, I entertain a second for the motion. Any of the discussions, comments? All seeing none, all those in favor of the amended agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That's approved. Next item is our public forum. It's a three-minute time limit per person. The city council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to data privacy rules, and no employee's names may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We also request that your comments be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be recognized only once. At this time, we ask that anyone who'd like to address the city council, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and fill out the form required. And I do have one from Jan Bronson. Jan, you want to speak for three minutes?
Jan Bronson, property on 25 minutes away avenue. Would like to address the council. I was here at the last meeting. I read your meeting minutes. I'd like you to correct your meeting minutes. At no time did I ever ask the council at the last meeting to vote on when I asked about building a wall on the hillside. I never asked the council to do that. What I did come before the council and ask is how I get on the agenda to be able to do that. So I don't like words being put in my mouth and being foolish to say that I would come at this public forum and ask you to vote on something. So I would like you to correct your meeting minutes, correctly state that I never made that statement and withdraw that from your amendments. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak in public forum? Second call for public forum. And the third and final call for public forum. Close the public forum at 6:35. So with that, we'll go to our agenda. We have a new sergeant that is in charge of the OrnoCo contract. His name is Sergeant Mark Chambers. He started last week, so he will be, he's working days, but when he comes on the night shift, I've asked him to come to our meeting and he can introduce himself in the future. Dan, the fire chief.
Good evening. All right, so we had a slow month, which is good. I think I mentioned last time, but we actually had it. So the ISO Insurance Services Organization did a review of us. So Dan and I, you know, met with the ISO person. So again, for those not familiar, you know, insurance service organization, they do a rating for each city, and there's three parts for the rating. It's dispatch, which is out of Rochester, so we don't have any control, our department, and the water system. And so we, and the goal is to get a lower rating. So way back when, we were in eight. After we got the missing water system, which is, you know, 2011, 12, we did a rating. We became a six slash seven, depending on how close you were, you know, to a hydrant. And we were told that they probably wouldn't come back, but I guess now the insurance companies want more frequent visits, so they're going to shoot for every five years. And so I, it was only about an hour of my time, so I went through and reviewed everything with them, and so I haven't heard back the results. You know, last time, there was some things I didn't know that I could be doing to documentation. It's all about points. You know, you get points for doing things. So our water system, we have more hydrants, so as you get more points, I have a new engine. I do better documentation, so I'm hoping that maybe all those points will lead to us potentially getting a better rating, which does affect some insurance agencies. So I have not heard. When I get the answer back, I'll make sure that the city gets it, but we've done our part to kind of do all the paperwork and the review, and now it's on their side to do it. So once I get the results, then I'm assuming what every five years, they'll catch us and we'll do it. Okay, so as you, as a couple months ago, I brought up just to kind of whet your appetite a little bit, is so that again, with the fire department has a nonprofit site at the fire department called the Relief Association. And so the Relief Association is for the betterment recruitment and retention of the fire department, fire department members by providing a pension. And so we're currently at $1,400 a year, 10 years partially vested, 20 years fully vested, so very similar or very small town. Since we're a nonprofit, recognized by the government, we can do things like charitable gambling, we can request donations, you know, those type of things, you know, from that organization also. So I just mentioned that we were going to review at our annual meeting our amount. So the state, every year, we do this document that says, you know, here's all the people, here's all the, if I could say liabilities, you know, if all the people could retire, which they can't, but if they could, here's their amount, here's our assets, you know, so we're trying to, you know, deposit our money, you know, invest our money, make money so that we can potentially, you know, increase the amount. So based on the amount of people that we have in a given year, you know, people that, you know, their age, age, time of service, it's a whole, if you look at that document, there's a lot of numbers there, and one of them is near the back page where it says, you know, what is the maximum allowed that we could, as a fire department, request or do? If we do anything above that, then part of that falls on the city somehow, since we're, the fire relief is associated with the fire department. So of course, best practice is we don't ever request an amount more than what the state says. So the document that you have in front of you says that our amount is 1,900. We're currently at 1,400. We thought we'd be conservative and jump it up from 1,400, you know, to 1,800, so a $400 increase. As I mentioned, I looked at other departments, some departments every year increase the amount, 50 bucks, 100 bucks, you know, as their investments change, we tend to be kind of more of a common people of, okay, we build it up a little bit, and then we make a change. So it's 2016, we lasted the change, I think we're at 12 hard and went to 14, and I remember 14 to 18. It doesn't really have any effect other than the, you know, the next people that decide to retire, they would get more member, this is the all-years of service. So kind of, we voted our mean last night to increase it from 1,400 to 1,800. So it's kind of a, since we are affiliated with the city, you know, request that you guys also approve, you know, our increase from 1,400 to 1,800, knowing that we're not going anywhere near the amount that would have any city impact.
So you need a motion to approve?
Yeah.
The increase?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the fire relief suspension plan to increase from 14 to $1,800 per year.
Okay.
For your service job. One comment in our packet, the form is FC20. There's nowhere listed $1,800 before you ask for signatures. Do you have a new form that reflects that?
So that form is, you don't sign that form for that. So no, I gave you that to as proof that the 1,900 is the maximum, and I'm only requesting 1,800. Yeah, you don't sign that at all, that's all done.
Never, no, like, you know, like, the people would have 10 years back at 1,400.
So you get, so the question is, when do you get the money? You get the amount when you retire. But if so, so if I decide to retire in January, I'm not going to get 1,800. So, you know, anybody who's already retired, they've already got their money.
Right, no, but the people like Ken Dolan, just say Ken, he's got like 14 years. Well, when he goes to 15, will he get $1,800 a year back?
No, so the, so you, so the next year's sheet will be changed, and everybody's years of service, and well, now we're based on an 1,800. If you look at the very top of that first page, it says 14, it will go to 18. So yeah, all this spreadsheet will get updated with the new amount.
So I mean.
So yes.
We did retire at 10 years, 14, and one year.
No, 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 no.
It goes back?
It's just your years of service when you decide to retire, you know, 10 years, partial 20 is full, that times $1,800. So there's no, 14 will be gone after you approve the new amount.
Any other comments? All those in favor, certainly probably saying aye.
I have nothing to comment.
I'm sorry?
Has a comment.
You know, I feel kind of sorry for a man who retired for 30 years. He lost $12,000 by retiring two months.
It's always that, you know, do you, you know, when you do it, you know, we try to do it at our annual meeting, and so Ken retired after our annual meeting, and plus, we, the form wasn't done, so we didn't know the exact amount. We weren't, we weren't trying to be punitive with him. We did have a member retire with many years, and, you know, he got $4,000. So it wasn't done punitive, in my opinion.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye on the increase.
Aye.
Oppose? Approve?
Okay, and the next one is just a quick, so our bylaws, which if you've never seen them, you now have a copy of the bylaws of the Relief Association. So you can see it's very administrative, you know, who are the officers, you know, what are our rules, you know, you got to be a member in good standing at the fire department to be a member of the Relief Association. At the annual meeting, I declare anybody who's not a member of the standing so that they don't get that pension, you know, here of eligibility. And then near the back, I think it's page seven or eight, is actually where the amount is defined. So I'm just asking you to approve, you know, the bylaws with just that change from 1,400 to 1,800.
May I make a motion for that? Second?
Second.
Well, that's on appendix nine, there's signatures that are needed on the bylaws.
So yes, you should, you should sign that, saying that you approve that set of the bylaws.
And today's the 15th, you want to make that change? With the signatures, okay. Any other comments? Was there any other changes other than the dollar sign?
Nope, that's the one again.
All signal of the comments, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Okay, and so I know you're going to do the resolution later, but I'll just quickly tell you about it. So again, for those that weren't there, so as part of our Relief Association, we do charitable gambling at Tilly's, and we make profits off that, and we can't donate the money to ourselves. We have to donate all the profits. And so we have a rating that we try to do by donating to various organizations. So last night, we decided to donate some money to the city, donate some money to some other organizations. And our accountant said that we should be below a certain quit level at the end of the year to have the best tax, you know, not to have to pay taxes or the least amount of tax that came, or exactly how it was said. And so this donation is, you know, our family profits, you know, to the city and earmarked for our fire department for equipment funds so that we can buy trucks and equipment that the city doesn't have to pay for. But we have to, we donate it to the city. So we typically do two donations, major donations usually one at the end of the year, and then we typically do one out of late spring, maybe May timeframe, because by June, that kind of dictates our rating, because we have to donate again all the money, but we can't donate to ourselves. So anytime you see us, you know, doing anything with Tilly's gambling, you know, all that is for the betterment of, you know, the major part of doing that is for this, so we can donate money to the city. So I'll let you do that later, but I just want to explain, especially to the people, when you see these large donations, that's a lot of hard work, donating that. For responders, you see, we had six city, four township, you know, I'm meeting this month, so that's why it says next month.
There was a, excuse me, in the fire department, there's a $50 calibration gas meter invoice in our packet?
Yeah, again, we don't have, I don't know why those show up there. Bill you can just pay. Not going to, it's in my, it's in my email that I sent to the city.
She just put it in the packet.
It should not be in the.
It'll be big.
For interested people, that was for us.
I do not, I don't need a conversation. It's for our cordless meter that we use for like CO calls. Okay, and then usually almost never have anything for EOC, but we do have one thing. So if you've ever worked with, or, you know, Mike Braumberg, he's been the Allstate County EOC, or emergency management director for many, many years. He's taken a new job in the sheriff's organization. It's now a captain, John Jacobson, is now going to be the new emergency management person. So I haven't had a chance to meet him, but at some point, we probably will. I know one year, I had to give them a call during the middle of Gold Rush and some storms were coming, so it's kind of probably somebody the city should be aware of, you know, if we ever have, knock on wood, another flood or something, that we would do. So John, Captain John Jacobson will be the new person replacing Mike Braumberg.
Okay, good.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Dan. All right, next item is our personnel area, and the first thing in your packet was a letter explaining some information from Smith and Schaefer, which is the people that have done our audit. And this was something that we discussed back in August or October for the personnel committee about doing, helping us with bank reconciliation. And so in his proposal, the letters in the packet, he says, send us a proposal to help us with, it's kind of the end of the, it's starting to be the end of the year for bank reconciliation, required bankroll return, payroll returns, assisting in reconciling payroll differences, and general consultation regarding accounting transactions. So throughout the year, through Sandy, Rebecca, Geraldine, all coming on board, the amount of training that occurred, or lack of training, we've had some issues that we're trying to correct. There's no penalties or anything, it's just a matter of some late quarterly statements that need to be rectified, and some payroll differences that need to be rectified, and all those things are being taken care of right now. And that started back in August, I think is, yeah, August. So going forward, in an email that's in your packet, I talked with Andrew, and so far they've, starting in August, they have accrued about 60 hours of help with a lady named Shannon to help us with all these reconciliations of payroll differences and the things mentioned in Andrew's letter. They will continue to help close out the year end and as well as start to finish up the reconciliation of our 2020 budget, some items that we need to go in and just kind of rearrange, get our budgets straightened out, there's some, some funds that need to be realigned and they'll all be taken care of. So we close out the 2020 in good shape. And at the same time, Geraldine and Kathy are getting all the training that will aid in us starting out 2021 in a much better position than we are today with how to handle our payroll and all the different funds that need to be taken care of and payments and everything. So through January, they're proposing, in the email that was in the packet, he was proposing 80 to 85 hours, I think it was, yeah. Right. So at that $115 an hour rate, that 85 number is 9,775. And as in the email, I would like to propose that we cover 90 hours, up to 90 hours for the $10,350 fee. I'll make a motion that we approve Smith and Schaefer's bid to assist us with the bank reconciliation and payroll differences and accounting transactions through January for $10,500.
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion or comments? At the same time, I've been working with Shannon from Smith and Schaefer. We've also engaged Tyler Tech, which is a software company that handles accounting split between Geraldine, Tyler Tech, and Shannon. It's been a team effort to, and training prep for exercise too as well. So it's been a lot of benefit to come from it going forward into 2021. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Approve? Next item is the 2021 fee schedule. And I believe the only noted change is we updated our water fees based on an earlier meeting in September, about raising the flat facility base charge, $18.28, that was a 3% increase.
1828.
1828, yeah. If they'd like to make a motion to accept the schedule for 2021.
I will move to accept the fee schedule for 2021.
In a second? Two seconds? Any questions or comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose? It's approved. Next item is a discussion and potentially helping Tilly's out with the COVID and their liquor license. It's a $100 fee. We're, would like to entertain a motion to relieve Tilly's of their liquor license fee for this year because of the COVID and the impact on the restaurant, and this is a slight token that we can help out Tilly's restaurant in this pandemic timeframe. The license fee and everything will be filled out appropriately and everything, it's just that we won't be charging $100.
How much of that fee goes to the state?
I'm not sure.
It goes to the city, to all the cities.
Only $100.
For off sale.
For the off sale, but they do, I don't know, they do on sale.
Yeah, we've never handled a non-sale yet. I know that, I don't know what the cost is.
What are we doing, off sale or?
There's two, there's off sale and then there's regular.
The off sale is the restaurant.
Right, we've only ever handled so far off sale at Gascoigne, it was $100. I would guess the other part would be far more, just so you guys know.
Right.
But I'm not for sure how much I can check.
We need to be really clear what we're approving because there are two licenses up there.
Yep.
I'm assuming that their off sale is probably doing fairly well.
Yes.
Because gassing goes is.
Right. It's the bar restaurant that's struggling because of the lack of ability to gather.
Right.
But the off sale has pretty confused business.
So in your, in your fee schedule, it's, for your information, it's $1,500 for on sale, $100 for off sale, and $200 on Sunday.
Okay, just a little smarter. Okay, the on sale's $1,500, the off sale is 100, and the Sunday was what?
200.
200, okay.
So are we, I mean, we can't be, I want to say nice to one business without being nice to another. We're doing an off sale license, not a, not an on sale. So if we're doing an off sale license for Tilly's, are we doing the off sale license for others that might come forward and request the same benefit?
What did she request?
She didn't request it. This is my request to put on the agenda. So you're right about, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and my, just because the lack of traffic, food and restaurant being closed is my concern that this could be, you know. Tilly's has suffered from the lack of people coming into the restaurant versus gassing go has continuously been, it's never stopped, any type of, or being closed or shut down.
I'm just worried about.
That's fine too, I don't have any problem with that.
I'm just worried about what we're, what the message we're sending to the public is, I mean, there's a lot of citizens in the city that are running businesses of different sorts, and there are some businesses besides the liquor store or the restaurant that have also struggled. So I really think that there's a lot of folks that could come and ask for this same benefit.
For discussion, I just raised a question, I thought it was a.
I mean, I think, well, wait, the government, it looks like they're going to do something good for the restaurants.
Everybody says yes. Plus, there's a lot of low-income loans and things like that.
Or they're going to have some, whatever that, if money is.
We can.
Well, I think maybe, could we give her a 90-day grace on her or something? Are paying it or?
Because then her license.
It's a license, there's a deadline for trying to be there by the first year, so that's.
I mean, if she has the paperwork in, that's all that technically needs to be into the state. You know, we could, you know, see what the.
It was a consensus of, I mean, you don't want to pursue because of the precedent it's setting, I have no problem, I just raised it for discussion.
Ryland, were you thinking of doing the $100 fee or the $1,500?
No, it was $100 for the off sale.
I'll make a motion to reject.
Second.
Any discussion or comments? All those in favor of not pursuing the off sale relief of the $100, saying, saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Next item is your outstanding citizen award. There's a sheet from the committee that identifies A and B candidates, you can read I can read it too real quick on. They've reviewed several nominees, but there's two nominees that they'd like to, are bringing to the county, or to the council. Candidate began volunteering on the Gold Rush Committee in the late 1990s, eventually an opening on city council rose, and this person stepped up to represent the city, serving in a number of capacities and participating on numerous committees over many years. This person made the vocation of serving our city like a vacation, always stepping up when duty called without complaint and going above and beyond many times. We no longer, while no longer on the city council, this person continues to volunteer on the Gold Rush Committee in an effort to continue giving back to the community. Candidate B began volunteering in our community in the mid to late 2000s while serving on the Parks and Trails Committee. This person oversaw the adopt a highway program for many years before the county restructured roads around OrnoCo. Despite a host of family and work commitments, when a need arose, this person stepped up to serve as chair of the Parks and Trails Committee. When a need arose, this person stepped up to serve as chair of the Parks and Trails Committee. Well, both individuals are truly qualified and many more were considered. Here's our recommendation, the council's trying to consider a recommendation for candidate A for. Ornoville citizens, of Ornoville's outstanding citizen ward. Pending council approval, it is our hopeful wish that this will be presented to January, we're gonna see the council meeting. Unless council chooses another upcoming meeting day to recognize individual. So Trish, you have any other comments? I've probably read more than.
Both candidates have been giving a great deal more than's been listed here, and I think both candidates are very worthy and deserving. Oh, any comments from you?
I'll pretty much sum it up.
Okay.
So with that, there's a, do you expect a motion to recommend A or just FYI?
I'd say it would be preferred, yes.
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation by the outstanding citizen. Ward committee for candidate A. Second.
I will second that motion.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the recommendation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both.
We skipped the rate, the schedule, Flattery.
In your packet, there was a. Letter from Flattery and Hood regarding a twenty twenty-one. Rate schedule and the. The rate went up about three point three percent on the general municipal matters. I think it was employment and real estate fees per, per hour too, so. I make a motion that we accept the Flattery and Hood twenty twenty-one legal services fees. Second. Questions or comments?
I'd sure like to see him figure out something so they'd come to a meeting, you know, a flat rate for two hours for a meeting or something. You know, there's so many questions that get asked at the council. We cannot get them answered. You know, and who is back, and then one or two people is answering the question there, you know. I mean, I haven't seen. Seen him here for, I mean, probably back in March.
And the reason for that is, his wife works in a nail clinic, and because of COVID, he does not want to risk himself of being outside of the home. Like I'm a drawer reading.
So then maybe appoint somebody else to take our meeting there. We should look for a different attorney, I mean.
I mean, it's, he's got a rate. If we wanted him to be here, we could pay for him to be here.
I, well.
He's available by phone, if you want to call him, that's fine too. That's the reason why he just doesn't want to have other contact with his family and work, so. I'm sure there's a lot of situations like that.
But I mean, he used that excuse last year before. He didn't have that excuse, I should say, last year, and he didn't come, you know. I think it's very important that the city is represented by an attorney and that the answers could be got here in front of the. Audience, you know.
Well, I hope that changes here shortly with the vaccine coming out and he can, he can join us, so.
But I think also, if you start requesting that he's here, every single time, it's gonna cost us, and we have long meetings, and he's gonna charge us every hour that he's here. Even when it's not relevant.
Okay, so what you're saying, stuff should go under the table or whatever.
No, I'm saying we're better off paying him. When we have a question, we should ask him and pay him when we need him versus have him sit and, and. Not be needed.
Which is what we're doing now. We typically send things.
There are very few cities around don't have their attorney at their meetings. Very, look at Joe, he was shaking his head. That's, I mean. That sort of questions are asked, and I think it's very important, you know. I'm, I'm going off the council, but.
Yeah, you're right, and that's why, we talk usually a day, a day or two before the meeting. Ask if there's anything pertinent, and if there is, I say there is, and we'll call you. He's available. And but some things just work out, we don't, there's no need to talk to him, so.
That ain't what I'm saying. I'm saying we got a crowd out here in the audience. If they got a question or when we're going through and that, if we got something. I mean, are all them other towns around us? Wasting their money by having them, or are we, are we being selfish?
Prior to me joining the council, did you have a city attorney that came up?
Yeah.
Before COVID.
Well, no, I mean. But not since I've been on council. For the last two years, it's a rare occasion to have someone here. That's, I guess, why I'm.
My question is quite a bit.
It was always here, it was there at every meeting. It did have a flat fee.
And part of the reason is, was, he was living in Monona. So there was a timeframe for him traveling back and forth, so that's an hour and a half plus time here, so it. That builds up in their bill too, legal bill. So now that he's relocated and moved to Rochester, that's not, he moved last spring, and that's when the COVID started, so that's.
I'm just saying, it's something we should keep in mind, 'cause I think, you know, like Joe says, I mean, there's. A lot of, gonna be a lot of questions coming with this water and sewer. And we go away from the table all the time, and then they have questions answered the next day or two. These people out here don't get to find out what's happening.
He's available, if we have questions, a bit later on in our agenda, we can call him or he may call in. About seven thirty, I told him, we're probably discussing scenarios that we feel concerned, and some of the questions we may have, so.
So maybe moving forward.
Otherwise, he's, he's sitting at home right now. He could be listening and sitting at home too, but he's charging us for that too.
I, but I think what Carl's saying is that we could get ourselves into sticky situation if there, if he's not here. And we don't have him on the line, so we may, we may end up paying more money to have him here, but it may save us money in the long run.
If we get to those kinds of positions, we'll table the meeting. So we don't get ourselves in those positions, you know, we don't have, we can, he's available, if we call him. And he can speak to us on the cell phone. Okay. You have a motion for the, I think we did a three vote on that. Did you vote?
No.
None of the fees.
Okay. All those in favor of the new twenty twenty-one fee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Approve. I appreciate your comments and all your opinions within a little bit more too, so. And now we've, we've got a better system here, I think, to listen to our. Speakerphone too, so hopefully. Okay, now ordinances and resolutions. The first one is our twenty twenty tax levy. As I mentioned, we started out in September with a preliminary tax levy of nine hundred and. Three seven dollars, ten thirty-nine cents. That was the highest limit we could go. So we went back and went through the budget and. Mike Bonney had some questions about some of the bonds and CIP and things like that, so. What we ended up with, a proposal for a, it's a flat budget compared to our tax levies from last year was point zero. Zero point three six nine and. It turns out our net tax capacity. Which is what we received from the county increased six point nine percent. From two point two seven six million to two point four three four million. Originally, in September, we were estimating a two point three seven million dollar tax capacity. So in the final, that tax capacity came from the governor, came from the county, it was a little bit higher, yeah. So it kept the same, kept the same flat rate in your packet. You saw a summary sheet of our tax levies over the last, since twenty thirteen. It's all been relatively flat since last year, last, including this year, we've had three years now, keeping it a point, thirty, almost thirty-seven percent. And our tax levy, yet services eight hundred and ninety eight thousand and fifty dollars. So it's about a fifty. Fifty-eight thousand dollar increase in our number figure. From last year, but it's the same tax levy. The other thing that we were able to do is that we, by keeping it flat. Our initial. General levy. Was eight hundred and fifteen thousand, which is with our CIP at a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. By working it backwards from this point three six nine percent on the tax capacity. We could take that extra difference between eight hundred and fifteen, eight hundred and fifty-three and include that, put that extra money into our CIP. So the CIP is two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Now the resolution, that's what the figure is off to the side of CIP in the parenthesis, just an indicator of what it is. The CIP has to be part of the general fund because that's a transfer from the general fund into the CIP. That's why it has to be included, as opposed to be listed separately, which is what my body was proposing. So with that, I would make a motion that we accept the total levy for. Twenty twenty tax levy collectible in twenty twenty-one at eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand and fifty-two dollars. Resulting in a tax levy of. Thirty-six. Point nine percent, or thirty-seven percent. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments? We've been very good, keeping it at thirty-seven percent tax levy and, and. There's no reason why we hopefully can keep it at that going into the future years as well. Our tax capacity will continue to go up. The tax collection on the home here. Especially in the newer homes that have been built in the last two or three years. Usually takes three years before those new homes that are being built reach their full tax capacity, so. So I think we're, the city itself is in perfect shape. Any other comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, it's a voice vote.
Aye.
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 Approve, it's approved. Next item is our resolution twenty twenty dash oh five, which is for the school cost rezoning. From residential to D one. And the treasurer, Carl, if you'd like to speak for that.
Yeah, I guess it, it's a great idea, you know, if they can. I just see no reason not to rezone it, you know. They might have some issues on parking and stuff like that when they get. I mean, we're just talking about rezoning right now. I mean, we can't really take into consideration for the parking or not, but I think it's a great idea for them to. Rezone it. They got some good ideas. I think it'd be a good asset to the town.
I do too. I think it's really, it's a, it's a nice, I think it's great. The building is being used for such an event. I think it's got a lot of.
And saving the building, saving the building.
I was just looking at the plans and some of the effort that's gone into it and the ramps and everything for handicap accessible is really. Really nice.
I'd like to comment that I feel that they've worked very hard on, on getting this building to this point, and I also feel that they've. They've really been. Very good about working with the city instead of. Being oppositional or whatever. They've, they've just done a great job of working with all the professionals. And hiring the right people to make sure the project's done correctly, and they have gone above and beyond even to find parking. So I really think that this is. Fabulous project, and I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty oh five.
Second. All right, thank you. Any other comments? Just one comment, Jess, would you like to speak? Any other comments? Why don't you come up, please? Just real briefly.
Look, didn't really prepare anything for tonight, was just coming to observe and be here if there were any questions, but appreciate you guys' support. Through the last couple of years and have been working with a lot of people in the city and everybody's been great, so thank you from our end on that. And yeah, we're trying to work with everybody as much as we can to make it a smooth process, and as we go. Through the next phase, I'm sure there'll be more things that come up, but again. Totally open to what's gonna work for the city, what's not, and flow and understanding. The impact on the city and everything that's gonna come with, you know, a big building like that and what we hope. It to be in the future, so. All years.
We're glad you're here and appreciate your effort and all the time and money obviously you're putting into it and hope it turns out very well.
Yeah, hopefully we have a big opening celebration. Y'all can come and enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Are you, any other comments? All those in favor by voice here? Aye.
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 Approve, it's approved. Last item was a, the fire relief donation that Dad made reference to, resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-one. I make a motion that we accept the donation from the fire relief fund to be put into the fire equipment account. Any comments? Sign on all those by voice vote. Aye.
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 Hey. Water and sewer, we're about to pull that ahead. Well, everybody should have received a copy of the. Draft feasibility report, if you had a chance to read through it. That would be a good time to, and Joe, maybe if you want to do an introduction and ask your questions about this, is again a draft. Just finalized our January meeting.
January or February, whatever the wishes of the council are. January or February, whatever the wishes of the council.
So Joe, if you wanna.
Sure.
Read us your comments and.
So again, hopefully everybody has a copy of the feasibility report. If you don't, there should be some extra copies at City Hall. Geraldine, Kathy can help you with that. Just a little bit about the feasibility report itself. We've completed a number of reports over the years dealing with the system. That you guys have certainly seen and read and, and looked at. This is another one of those. This one's a little bit different in that this one is required as part of the four twenty-nine statute. That's a statute that allows cities to assess. Improvements to benefiting property owners. And so as part of that statute, there's some specific information that we structured the feasibility report to contain. And so a little bit about the feasibility report itself, there's a lot of information that you guys have all seen before. Numerous times, probably for several years, but what this does is it really kind of takes it and puts it one, in one place and. And hopefully assembles the most pertinent facts to, to people, the decision makers, to have in one place. Kind of in a condensed manner. And so the feasibility report really kind of discusses what, what are the proposed improvements? And what properties or parcels will be served by those proposed improvements? What are the project costs for those improvements? And what are the funding mechanisms for those improvements? And so we have, in this instance, we have project costs, we have some grant dollars coming in, and then essentially the difference is being funded by benefiting property owners. And that cost is divided amongst three fees, and those fees are assessed to benefiting property owners, and so. As a result, we're proposing to assess some costs, so we're going through the four twenty-nine, or following the four twenty-nine statute and preparing the feasibility report. And then the last elements of the feasibility report really kind of deal with the overall project schedule. that we're anticipating with the report, and then there's of course conclusions and recommendations as part of that. So again, this feasibility report's really a product of a lot of work that's come to this point and is, we took the information that we got from City Council at last month's meeting, as well as in the water and sewer committee meeting, we've been kind of talking about the feasibility report and the policies supporting the feasibility report for the last couple of months. And so all of that information has been kind of taken and assembled and incorporated into the feasibility report. If you'll note, one of the critical pieces of the feasibility report is the, the policy memo that we've essentially been working on, that's an appendix B of the report. It, again, it's continued to evolve as we have received feedback from the City Council on the water and sewer committee, and so you'll see a slightly updated version of that in appendix B. A little bit about the feasibility report and the process that I'm anticipating, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it tonight based on council's past feedback, but do want to let you know what we're kind of thinking about moving forward. So the thought tonight is just to introduce it and give a little background on the feasibility report, of course, answer any questions that the council might have, and then come back at the January meeting and spend a little bit more time on it, okay? And so really the next step in the process is we bring this to the council, we get feedback from the council, if there are modifications that need to be made, we'll make those modifications. Then the council accepts the feasibility report by resolution and we have a public hearing, okay? And so as part of that public hearing, we have to publish a notice and we have to mail out individual notices to impacted property owners. There is over five hundred parcels that are impacted by the property, so there'll be a pretty good sized feasibility report and mailing, so I'll have to go out in conjunction with that, and then we'll of course have one or two public hearings, depending on how we kind of want to do it. It's kind of a lot of people for, for, for the facilities that maybe we have. And so, you know, we might talk about different ways to handle that, we'll talk about that later. But we'll go through that feasibility report and at the public hearing, essentially I'll give a presentation with essentially all of the information contained within the feasibility report as the guide to the public hearing. And so really that's the process that we go through then. Typically, the city formally orders plans and specs, we go ahead, solicit bids, the city again approves the bids, we go through construction, cycle through construction, then we again recalculate the fees to be assessed based on the actual construction costs. We again go through a public hearing process where we notice and invite people and provide the final assessed cost to be assessed for the project. And so that's obviously several years in advance because we've got about two years of construction. So we're, we're talking probably about doing that in twenty, late twenty twenty-three. And so lots of steps between now and then, but just wanted to give you a little bit of background on how this process works and why we're, why we're doing this and why there's so, so much emphasis on it, okay? So that said, there is a summary and recommendations page in the front of the document. I don't want to touch on all of those, but I've highlighted a half a dozen of those items that I'd just like to maybe spend a few minutes on, and of course, if council has any questions as we go through this or any other portion of the feasibility report, by all means, let me know. The first item I wanted to draw attention to is item number one, and that really deals with the project and the fact that wastewater treatment facility is being designed to serve Orno-Go Estates, mobile home community as, you know, essentially an industrial user, a contract user. And so there are some cost splits that they would participate in. Those cost splits are included in the memo and they're discussed within the feasibility report. One of the things that I'm interested doing, in doing, is sending this draft feasibility report to Orno-Go Estates. I don't want to send it to them if you're not comfortable with me sending it to them before, you know, the council has had further chance to review it. Do you want me to wait, or is it okay if I send this and tell them that this is a draft that's essentially pending review in the City Council?
Now you're talking about the management of Orno-Go Estates, about the residents.
Right, no, it would go to.
Clarify that, yeah.
Mr. Cox is a gentleman at Orno-Go Estates that we're working on. We're simply, they're essentially the property owner and manager.
Well, I think it's kind of important they see it.
Yeah, absolutely.
The sooner the better, because we're going to want to monitor down the line sooner or later, you know.
Right, and there's agreements to execute with them and, you know, there's, there's a lot of work to do between the two entities, and I think we have been talking, the more information that we give them and the more engaged we are with them, the faster those things will come along.
And understand it's just a draft.
Yes, so that would be my perspective if that's acceptable, I'll take that approach, okay? Jumping down, and if there's anything here that you want to talk about, let me know, but item three simply talks about the fact that the project cost is about thirty-one and a half, or forty-one and a half million dollars. Item number seven talks about the fact that the local share of the project cost is about twenty percent of that, or a little over eight million dollars. And then jumping down to item number nine, the local share is being funded through a combination of things. First of all, Orno-Go Estates has a portion of that or a component of that local share, so they are paying that through the city. And then the city is financing the other components of the project based on the cost of the wastewater treatment plant, and they're recovering that cost through a plant investment fee, the sanitary sewer, the trunk sewer area charge, which is, you know, all of the big pipes, the lift stations, all of the primary infrastructure that's needed to convey the wastewater from central locations in Orno-Go to the wastewater treatment plant. And then there's a lateral charge, and that's for individual property owners who have a connection to the wastewater facility. Most of those are getting new, new water services. Some of the existing areas, we're also abandoning community waste treatment systems, televising sewers, those types of things. All of these, these three project cost elements are essentially divided by the number of equivalent residential units that effectively they serve. And so for the sewer availability charge and the trunk sewer cost, plus the plant investment fee or the wastewater treatment facilities, those costs are divided by the equivalent residential units that will connect initially in Phase one A plus the equivalent residential units that will develop over the next twenty years in Phase one B and one C. The lateral sewer connection charge is a calculation that simply takes the project cost for the lateral sewer and divides it by the number of people that will connect to it originally, initially. And of course, all of these costs are subsidized by that eighty percent funding that we're projecting for the project. So all of these, they're, they're really twenty percent of the actual. The estimated ERUs, item number eleven now, the estimated ERUs for Phase one and two have been calculated, and we've talked about those a number of times in sewer and water committee meetings as well as the council. All of those calculations are really included in appendix B and appendix C. Appendix B is the memo that talks about it, appendix C is where all the calculations are, okay? If you kind of go back and look through the report, you'll notice that we have calculated the estimated project costs and have calculated the number of ERUs, and from that information, we've estimated the fees for the plant investment fee, the sewer availability fee, and the lateral charge, and that, the total of those three fees is about fifty-nine-hundred-and-sixty dollars per equivalent residential unit. And that cost would, would be assessed to all of the parcels in Phase one A, and then the SAC and the PIF would be assessed, kind of moving forward to parcels as they, they, they develop or the existing parcels that get connected. Should also note, as kind of discussed in item thirteen, there are water main improvements. The water main improvements have been modified a little bit since, oh, May of nineteen twenty nineteen, when we originally did the feasibility report for that component of the project, based on recent discussions with the sanitary sewer, or regarding the sanitary sewer and the development of the technical memo and appendix B, we kind of decided that undeveloped parcels that are adjacent to the proposed improvements would be served with sewer and water. And so as a result of that, we've got more parcels that are being served. More parcels means more equivalent residential units, and essentially that means that there's a, there's an extra, oh, twenty-five equivalent residential units that are generated. And obviously those parcels would be assessed for the cost base for all those facilities, and so there's a little bit extra revenue that comes in as, as a function of that, that decision. Item fifteen on page two point three, there is a project schedule in the back of the feasibility report, and that project schedule calls for a public hearing. If you look in the schedule, I say either February or March. And that really is a function of the, the council's level of comfort with the feasibility report. You know, we've talked about it, I hope that nothing in this report's really a surprise to any of you. There might be details or nuances that maybe, maybe are, you know, discussed a little bit differently or in more detail or components of the fee structure and how things are calculated, that, that, that might be different or new or new to you, but most of the information has been discussed. And so as you look at this and as we discuss it, you know, if, if you were, if the council has lots of changes, I'll make those changes after we meet in January, and then I'll bring it back in February. Then hopefully the council will approve it at that point, and then we'll have the public hearing in March. If, if things move a little faster, we can, we can make that work too. It is very important that we contemplate how to deal with the public hearing effectively and that we all be comfortable with the information contained within the feasibility report. This is a big project, there's obviously lots of costs, it impacts a lot of people. We've tried to think about a lot of the details, there are a lot of projects or parcels that are different, different types of owners, different types of land use, a lot of different circumstances that we have had to kind of address, and we've tried to do our best to think through those and develop a policy that, you know, we can point to. And the hope, my hope is, is that, you know, we all are on the same page in terms of the council and, and the council supports that. And so when we go in front of the public, we, we kind of have a unified message and we've kind of thought through the issues and items and addressed people's questions and concerns in a consistent and concise manner. Item nineteen. Item nineteen deals with finances for the project. Obviously, we've laid out project costs and estimated grant funding and revenue streams. There does need to be additional work associated with those revenue streams. We typically have a, the city's financial consultant get involved, there are a second set of eyes, they can produce the amortization schedules and the different forms of documentation that the public facility authority is going to be looking for in conjunction with our drinking water and clean water revolving loan fund applications, which are due in March. And so one of the things that I would ask is, you know, direction from the council and, and really permission of the council to work with your financial consultant to start getting them up to speed and, and getting them involved in this process. And typically that'll take the form of one or, one of two people, your accountant or your finance and, and bond counsel. So, you know, that's, to me, in your situation, either Smith Schaefer or Mike, Mike Bobbani. I think both are more than capable of helping. Mike Bobbani, I think, is probably a little bit more experienced dealing with this type of project, and so I might recommend that you, you know.
You've added a motion, we can.
Well, if, yeah, if you're.
I do, I think, I agree, I think Mike is, he helped with the water.
He did.
Two thousand nine and ten and that application, so. The go-to guy to help us out and so I make a motion that we pursue the services of Mike Bobbani in our financial analysis and loan application for the clean water and the drinking water revolving fund loan applications.
And certainly I can help with the clean water and drinking water revolving loan. I'm sure Geraldine and I will spend more than enough hours on it, and having somebody like Mike to fill in some of the technical pieces and, and help, help with that application process is, is, is important. And of course, that's due in March, just like the plans and specifications, so it's really going to be a push to get all these things done, but.
A second to motion.
Patricia, your second?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. All right, any other comments? All those in favor, say something, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Approve?
Item twenty, just real quickly, Orno-Go has a water ordinance. You don't have a waste. The PFA and MPCA are going to require that you have an ordinance in place. Typically, the city attorney drafts ordinances. I would recommend that the city attorney get involved. The city attorney should play a role in this project. We're following state statutes, there's resolutions that need to be developed. We want to make sure that he's, you know, playing a role in this process. He, you know, he should be here during the public hearing, he should be helping prepare the resolutions. He should frankly renew the, review the feasibility report, and, you know, if there are any things in there that he sees as red flags or recommendations that he has, you know, we want that, that expertise brought into the project, especially a project of this size and scope. So one of the things that I would recommend is we go ahead and send this draft feasibility report to Mark, Mike, and, you know, have him available to staff to kind of help, you know, Geraldine and I develop those resolutions and, and have him be an active member in the project. At the end of the day, I think we'll all be better off if, if, if he's involved as well. And, and of course, I think also that he, he needs to be engaged and I think typically you've had legal counsel develop at least the initial drafts of those ordinances. So the wastewater ordinance needs to be developed, you know, and gotten into draft view, so we can start to review and refine it. And then also, excuse me, I think that components of the city's water ordinance that exists probably should be refined to better match what we're trying to do on the sanitary sewer side of things. So I think that one's just a few tweaks, but if you're going to do one, it should match the other. There needs to be some consistency in updating that water. Water ordinance is important and really goes along with the sewer ordinance development or the wastewater ordinance development. And so again, I think that those factors are things that, you know, we should kind of get the ball rolling on, and, you know, as we move down the path to, you know, refining the feasibility report and eventually accepting that and then presenting that to the public, you know, all of these pieces of the puzzle need to kind of come together. That's all I had in terms of items that I specifically wanted to talk about tonight. Are there any things that you folks had questions on as you looked at the report or would like to talk about?
I had one for discussion, if we can bring it back again, in January on page six point three-four. It's in the slide, and we, we had discussion with, you know, I just want to share some comments of my thinking about it, we can, we can discuss it more in January too, but. And the takeaway from our last meeting was that the residential and commercial project. And the takeaway from our last meeting was that the residential and commercial properties will be assigned a minimum ERU value of 1.0. And I look at that and I just, I still have some thoughts that, you know, there is a difference between residential and commercial from the standpoint. Commercial properties are for profit. And they're there to make money. Residential is what it is. It's residential. And I just feel like a resident could be looking at the commercial properties if they really understand the ERU values of why is a commercial property paying the same ERU value as living in my home? And so I just feel like it's more just, if you will, or fair to the residents and justifiable for the commercial properties to be assigned a minimum ERU value of 1.5. So it's those kind of backgrounds that I'm kind of swirling around my mind that we may want to revisit that or have that discussion in January. But I share those thoughts with you from my perspective. But I do think that we should do a separation and I think it's justifiable to.
Should be nice to get some commercial in this town.
It will happen, but, you know. So I just throw that up for discussion if we want to bring it back. I really had. I think it's a very concise report. A lot of the details are in the back of appendixes. That's fine. The summary and the introduction was a good chronicle to order where we came from, where we're at today. It's very brief and it's easy reading. And I think it'd be. As far as information.
Just a question for you, Joe. What about all these property lines? I mean, you know, there's property going through buildings. And what do you just go about and just put it in? Or how do you do it? You know, this town is plotted so bad. Like the house where I live is.
Yeah, it's a challenge. Absolutely a challenge. We have.
Why is the ground worker?
We don't necessarily pay a lot of attention to lot lines. We do try to establish right-of-way lines. That's where utility improvements are typically located, is within the right-of-way or within easements. So there are challenges there. We have done a fair amount of mapping over the years in terms of, you know, identifying property owners or property lines and property pins. Identifying property lines by re-drawing flats and utilizing found monuments and property pins to verify that those redefined flats are where they are.
We should look at it in the future to figure out their talent.
You can spend a lot, a lot of time and money. You know, if you wanted to go through and essentially survey all the parcels, that would be very expensive. The county has been putting in a fair amount of time and effort to improve their mapping. And frankly, it's not too bad anymore. If you really look at the county's website, they're pretty close. Well, and I did just have one other item tonight. It has to do with the memorandum of understanding that the city has with Homestead County and the MPCA. Every year, we do an annual update. I'm assuming that the council wants me to do this year's annual update.
For the MOU, yes.
I assume so, but. So I will prep that in January.
When is that due, Joe?
I think it's due in January or February. I think we typically meet with them in March. So. Lots of fun.
Take it fun.
Yeah.
Any other comments, Rick? Joe, what's your time? It's a, you know, it's a, if you haven't had the chance to look at it, it's an easy cup of coffee read or a tea. It doesn't take very long to look through. So appreciate you taking the time to look at it. Joe, if there's something else that we'll. Have questions about the maps after the meeting, feel free. The same ones that are in your, in the book as well.
Okay. By all means, if people have questions, give me a call at work. Perfectly fine.
Okay. The next item we jump back is to Public Works. Or one of our wells.
Do we have nothing on Gold Rush or Park and Trails?
Gold Rush should not be. And I'm not aware of anything from Park and Trail.
Working Trails has nothing other than what's in the meeting minutes attached. And there will be no meeting in January. No meeting in January.
Public Works, we had a. An incident where we had some high temperatures at the center and caused a little damage. And so we had to replace some thermostat, the thermostat. Public Works is asking for a, add a well building temperature alarm system that allows us to, and it's monitored, indicate when something goes out of thermostat so we don't overheat and cause problems with anything at the wellhouse. And so this is for both wellhouses. The alarm system is for $2,925.
Can you repeat that?
That's without taxes.
That includes shipping? It includes sales and use tax.
That will be shipping freight is included.
I got it. Okay. Sorry. She did not.
I make a motion that we approve the quote from In Control. With well building temperature alarm. Any discussion or comments?
Dan? Please, thank you. I just want to make sure that you include the cost of the new UPS system also for 807. That's also in the quote.
That's not included in the 2,000?
That's not part of the 2925.
Okay.
What's not included? I'm sorry.
The uninterruptible power supply, the one that went bad because of the overheating.
Okay.
So we need one of those two. And that's also in the quote for 807.
On the second page or third, second page.
So that's the 29 plus the 807.
Right.
For two of them, 807 each.
One of us.
This one went bad.
But we're going to monitor that whole town college.
Right.
$1,600?
No, just one of them.
Just the one. Okay. Okay. So I amend that motion to include the.
807.
Yeah, 307. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say you're probably saying aye.
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 What's that? The next item on Public Works is, I've been noticed on Minnesota Avenue. There were some dark spots that we still have in between some of our light poles. And so I was, I noted the four locations. We approached People's Cooperative. Dan did. He asked me to follow up. There's no charge for installing those lights because there's Transformers XS is right there. So there's no charge for installation. It's just that they tend to be about $13 a light per month of the LED lights. So I thought that would be a nice add to our lighting on Minnesota Avenue. So I make a motion that we approve the four additional streetlights on Minnesota Avenue North and South. Is there a second?
Second.
Comments? All those saying none, all those in favor, say you're probably saying aye.
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 Pose? Okay. Planning and zoning. The schoolhouse, we've taken care of. And the next item is Jan Tronson's law. So before we get the session, I'm going to get part of the. Mike? He is on? Okay.
Yep.
Can you hear us, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, good. We're good. We just started the conversation here on our agenda under planning and zoning about the wall. So I guess to initiate discussion, Jan, if you'd want to speak briefly. And then we'll follow up with questions and comments.
I'm glad to put the lights there on there. My light's been burning on my building there. And when the kids were stealing all the signs, it was my security camera, my light that caught the kids, the sheriff, who was stealing all the campaign signs up and down the street. I don't know if they, if they ever did to the kids. I don't think a whole lot. They should have. But again, it's my light, my cameras on my building at 2:00 in the morning. It was on camera that I could actually give that to the police department to show them that the kids, those were the kids that did it. So going back, again, I've, you've all got my packet. You've all read it. I've been here many years. You all understand. I'm glad to hear your city engineer talk about public hearings. That's something we never got when the road was widened. It's time we quit kicking the can down the road. This can's been kicked down the road long enough that I went before the city council or the planning and zoning. I would come before you folks. I told you what I wanted to do. You're all aware of why I won't spend my money if the property doesn't belong to me. It's a factor of trust. I've served 27 and a half years in federal law enforcement. I know about trust. I know about transparency. I know everything else. And as you read my packet, you can see how I've been treated as a property owner up there now. That's why I want the property to belong to me. And it's an asset. It's an asset to the city of Warren Oakle. When I take a look at the new business at the school coming up, they talked about parking. If the city would have put and flattened it out and put the spots there, you could have, you use it for Gold Rush, for handicap parking. It is illegal to do that, to put handicap signs up because it does not meet ADA specifications. You have to have six feet on the passer side in order to get out of handicap slot. You do not have that. The Gold Rush continues over the years to do this. We kind of turn a blind eye and look the other way. So I proposed the last time I was here, I said, I guess I got to spend $10,000 out of my pocket to put something on. That's a minimum of what I'll have to spend to do that. And I'll only do it if I own the property. The other aspect is, is that the city maintains it. I filled all your paperwork out that the planning and zoning asked me to do. So they said if you vacate, they call vacation. I call vacate. Vacate the hillside. Through town, everybody else, every other resident through town has a 30-foot road right-of-way through town. From the bridge, for whatever reason, back in the 1800s, they had six words team hatch down to the T. It's 100-foot road right-of-way. It should be actually a 60-foot. So by the way, the curve is, what I'm trying to do is, if it was 60-foot, that'd be my property anyway. And I put the wall up and do that. If you took a look at my pictures where my car was parked there, that's where the road used to be before they widened the road. So you take the hill, the slant of that hill, and you move it out to my car. And you can see the grade. That would be a very mobile grade to fill in to do that. When they moved it to that, and give what they did, they made a slope that is non-maintainable. I was talking to Dan, your city person, non-maintainable. I've talked to people all over the city council. You've seen me try to mow it. You say it's not as dangerous. It's non-maintainable. So the other factor that I had to kind of prove my point to is that because the city maintains it, I've rolled down that hill several times. He's locked his lawnmower down the hill, hand over hand rope, trying to mow it, to do it. I'm going to call an ambulance and then I'm going to call an attorney. And I'm going to sue the city of Warren Oakle for my medical bills because you're making me maintain something I can't maintain. So I think I've tried to come up with a thing tonight that I think you can, it takes, according to that, takes four fifths of this council to vacate it. Now, I can put, I put a petition also to vacate it, but the council themselves can vacate it. And they can move this whole step forward through the council, four fifths of all. I also filled out the thing and I didn't ask the VFW because I don't know who is the person of, who has the right of power of attorney at the VFW to be able to do any of that. I can only pay for my own. I can't pay for other people's. I think it's a win-win situation. So I don't want to take a lot of your time because the night gets late. But you've got my packet. You've all been here. This is nothing new to any of you. What's going on? I wish it would have been a public hearing at the time this was all done. It was all done illegally. I've said in my memo how it was done legally. But the council never voted on this to widen the road and do what they did. Your city engineer was involved in that. And I would still like sometime today or sometime for the record that your city engineer, it says right in the letter that I put there from the county that said he was involved from conception to completion. Now, I would like to know who the other individual or individuals were.
Let's stay on this subject.
The council. I guess the council to know who those other individuals were in that letter that did this outside your statute. So.
Jan, I need to interrupt you for a second.
Okay.
Just to make sure, this was a county project. There was never any city council discussion about it, minutes about it, because it wasn't a city project. They asked us for suggestions, inputs, that type of thing. It was a county project. So when they decide, whatever they decide to do, it was the county's decision to make those changes. That's why there's nothing documented in the council minutes through that period because it wasn't a city project.
If you read the letter, and it was very clear from the county. He said in the letter, and you read that letter and it's signed by the county. The city asked to go outside that project to widen that road where they widened in front of my property, in front of the VFW, in front of Herb and those people. The city, it says right in that letter, the city asked for him to widen out that project. They also state this was only supposed to be a overlay project. The letter is very clear, Mayor, onto what? And he said the city asked to do it and involve your city engineer. Now, your city engineer knows about it. I hope maybe one even on the council would ask the city engineer who the other individual and what they did. Was it because then, Mayor, we'd all, again, 27 and a half years in law enforcement. It's called transparency. We'd all have that transparency of that letter. Because if Mr. Palin worked on that, he would have got paid by the city. Because I don't believe that anybody does work for free and attend these meetings. So you're right. You will find no meeting minutes. You will find nothing on it, but you will find a letter by the top officials. Richard Devlin wrote that letter over. He was the county, the head of the county. You look at the director of it and the person that run the project. Very clear when they signed it and said, this is how it took place. Hindsight, foresight, what I'm asking the council tonight to do is, four of you step up to the plate. I hope all five would step up to the plate and vacate it. So in January, we could have a public hearing. We could turn that roadway back to the owners there that I've asked for. And I can continue to put a wall up. And then you don't have to hear from me anymore. You know, your time is valuable. My time is valuable. I've spent a lot of time on this already, a lot of research, a lot of writing to do this. So having said that, I'll let said that because you've got what I'm asking. Thank you.
So I appreciate your comments. As far as anything happening tonight, it's probably not going to happen tonight for the reasons being that if you want to vacate something, you need to fill out a vacation, a street vacation form, which has a description of the property of where you want to.
I did that, your mayor. I sent that in. I sent that in yesterday.
It has to be a professional survey product description that will be reported as the county.
As I read in your, as I went to the planning and zoning mayor, he told me I needed to go to the League of Cities. I went here and I left that and I looked all this up. And it said exactly how to do what I needed to do. I needed to take a petition, just sign the petition and send that in. I put my address as 25. Herb does not have an address. on that property there, there is no stated address at that, at this parcel. There is no address, I'm twenty-five. It should be twenty-seven or something like that, there's nothing there, because it goes across the street. So I have, so, again, it takes someone here tonight to stand up for me
Right.
as a taxpayer, and make a motion to this council, have it second it, and have it voted on, and it can be done.
At this point, thank you, Jan, appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, this is Mike.
The question is, just before we get into the general discussion, I'd just like to comment that the right-of-way comment was sent to, uh, filled out by Jan, and that was in the PNC minutes, I believe, or it's in, it's in the packets. The street vacation is a form that's on our city website, we're filling out, and asks for references. It asks for a, uh, property description, which is a very detailed description, it's not a drawing with lines on it, but it tends, it is a requirement to have a, a property description that's recorded in the county recorder. There's a lot of issues with the, uh, the street vacation, where the wall's gonna be, and with utilities. I, I have, I've asked, um, Mike to join us, Mike, are you in the phone? Oh, Mike, you're on Zoom, okay, you got in, okay.
Yeah.
I had on some of the background, just briefly, the background between a, a permit for a license agreement versus a street vacation of the property, and the challenges that come with each of those.
Right, Mayor, so the, the city where this wall is proposed to be located, the city controls the right-of-way, which is an easement in favor of the city. In order to grant somebody the right to use that, use that area, you could do that by way of either a right-of-way permit, which is more typically used for a temporary obstruction of the right-of-way. In other words, they're not gonna construct a wall, but maybe put something temporarily into the right-of-way. You would request that they get a permit to do that, and their city has a permit form. Now, you could use a permit form for a more permanent structure in the right-of-way as well, such as a retaining wall. But a more common way to do that would be to do it through a, a formal agreement. And we use an agreement called a license agreement, which is similar to a lease, it's just limits the use of the space for a particular purpose and, and for a particular duration with conditions in it. So that's how you would go about, and, and then just to tie the, tie it all together, frequently some cities will do a permit process, but then as a condition of the permit being granted, they'll make a condition that the, the permutee enter into a license agreement with the city on a form acceptable to the city. So they kind of are both used. But whichever way you do it, it's just basically a consent document that allows somebody to use the right-of-way. This gentleman's not asking for that, I, I mean, he, he filled the permit out at the suggestion of the city, but I read the prior letter, not the most recent letter, and it's pretty clear, he doesn't really seek that, and I think his comments tonight kinda make that clear. And so he's asking for a vacation, a vacation's not a, a right to use the right-of-way, it's actually transferring ownership, or, or vacating the city's easement. And which would basically the city would no longer have that right to use that space for public use. And if you do that, you have to record that document, and it, it would be in the form of a resolution. The typical process would be initiated one or two ways, either by a property owner, or majority of abutting property owners of a particular property, which could just be one, but in this case, I think there's three property, property owners. And if they petition, then the city could take that petition and attach it to a resolution, and you would have to attach it to a resolution, and either that would be a resolution approving or denying the vacation. If it's denied, you don't record the denial with the county recorder. But if it's granted, you have to record that with the county recorder, because otherwise, if it's not recorded with the county recorder, there will be no formal memorialization of the fact that the city no longer has an easement. An easement is a property interest, it's something that you have that, as you might've heard before, runs with the land. So when this gentleman goes to sell his property, you know, the buyer of the property will get, or if he goes to refinance it, the title company, or the buyer's title company will do a title search, and this will be a defect on title, if they don't record something that memorializes the property that's being vacated, if that makes any sense. And so that's why you need a legal description. A legal description is more like a meets and bounds legal description, where you don't necessarily need a survey, although you could have a survey, frequently we see surveys, but you would have a surveyor go out and, and plaid out the portion of the right-of-way that could be vacated. And, so that's what a vacation is, and then you would take that legal description and, and record it with the county if it was granted. The other way to do it is, you'd still need a legal description, so, because if you don't have a legal description, how, how does the county recorder record it, record it? How do they know where, where the city stops and starts, or begins, or what portion of the easement being vacated? Now, so that's, that's an issue. So then, the city council could initiate, um, initiate a vacation themselves, that's correct. They would have to adopt that by force this majority, that's correct. But you have to do it by, by resolution, and there's, there's notice requirements for that process too. So I'll read from the statute, Minnesota statute four twelve eight five one, and this is cited in the league materials that the reference. Uh, it says this, "No vacation shall be made unless it appears that it, it, excuse me, unless it appears in the interest of the public to do so." And this is the important part, "After a hearing preceded by two weeks published and posted notice, the council shall cause the written notice of mail to each property owner affected by the proposed vacation at least ten days before the hearing. The notice must contain at minimum a copy of the petition, which we don't have yet, or a proposed resolution." So if the council's gonna do it on their own initiation, they have to do a resolution. You have to draft that resolution, and you've gotta mail it to every affected property owner, not less than ten days before the meeting, the public hearing. And we haven't done any of that. So that's why we can't do it tonight. And the resolution is all time, place, and date of the hearing. And then, down at the bottom of that same statute, it says this, "The notice shall then be recorded with the county recorder." Now, you could adopt a resolution with no legal description, but in my experience, the county recorder will not record that. I mean, you need to have more than just a personal ID, because we're not vacating the entire property, we're just evacuating a portion of a right-of-way, a portion of the easement. So, and I don't see any of that, so, so I don't, I don't think the city can move forward, I don't know how they could. You know, could you just make a motion and a vote, that's all fine and good, but that's not gonna have any legal effect in, you know, five or ten years from now, when they go to refinance this property or sell the property, this is gonna show up. And they're gonna say, oh, well, there's a retaining wall in the middle of the city's easement. And the seller, this gentleman, will say, no, that was vacated. And then the title company will say, no, it wasn't vacated, we have the title report from the county, the county recorder right here. And I don't see that, you've got an obstruction in the right-of-way. So, and that happens frequently, I mean, more, more often than not, how this happens, permission. Or sometimes they get a building permit to just construct like a porch or a shed, or whatever in their yard. But they don't put it in the right spot, they put it into the public right-of-way, and then when it comes time to sell or refinance, that shows up, and it's a problem. And then they want the city to vacate it then, but the problem then is Joe Palin's email. And this is what I was getting at when I was writing these emails to, to the mayor, to try to describe this, is are we using the right-of-way? You know, typically, there's utilities in the, the area, you know, there's utilities in the area. It's gonna be difficult to say that it's in the public benefit when the public is using those and needs the right-of-way, apparently. Or utility. And, and not only current utilities, but future utilities, and, and still removal and other things. So, that's gonna be a problem, I mean, I don't know, I, I mean, it's up to the council to determine whether there's a public benefit, but like I just said, I don't think it's ready for the council's anything yet. So I think, you know, I think you should just ask the gentleman that was speaking what, what he wants, and if he really wants to vacate the right-of-way, there is a, a form, the city has an approved form, and you should have him complete that form with a legal description of the portion of right-of-way where the wall is going to be built. Now, the problem with that is gonna be Joe, Joe's email, where he says there's pipes right there. There's pipes, he can describe it, but, you know, it's hard to say it's in the public benefit when the public is currently using it. How can we give up a, a right-of-way that the public's currently using? That's gonna be difficult, I think. Difficult to meet that standard, I don't, I don't know how it can be met, but, um, yeah, so in any case, and then to give you a little bit more context, when somebody does build a shed over the right-of-way, maybe it's in their backyard or whatever, that's when we typically use a license agreement. We just say, well, you know, you built it over a right-of-way, we could make, we could forcibly make you remove it, rip it down. But, you know, we don't, we're not gonna do that, because we've already constructed the public infrastructure, we're not immediately repairing it. You know, a lot of times, these utility pipes don't get repaired for twenty years. And so we'll just grant you a license agreement to, to say that, oh, it's there. We acknowledge that it's there. We're gonna let you keep it there, you know, but if we ever have to repair our place, we have to tear it up. Yeah, go ahead.
Can I talk a second? God, so where's utilities, there are none, Gopher's been out and looked at it all, Dan's been up there and looked at it all, and it's impossible to put utilities up on that hillside.
So, utilities marked on the slope above where the wall is at.
What?
There's two orange flags at the top of the slope. They're on the slope. So, but Jan, you had a question for Mike?
Yeah, the question, for your attorney, I guess the question is, because evidently he didn't get the packet, to look at the stuff, to see, I, I put a vacation thing in, I, I went before the planning and zoning, I've done everything the city has asked, I bought a vacation in there, I've got the signatures. Again, as you read, as I go, they, they told me I needed to go, uh, sir, for the, you know, just legal city things, I got this copy off, just what they said.
Sure, and here's the form you need to fill out.
Well, I said here, just to start, so, question, the one form that they did give me to the attorney, the reason I didn't fill it out, because I don't want a temporary right to be able to use that because of what's going on with the city. Put my own ten thousand dollars worth of money out, I need to own the land, because I do not trust.
We fully understand that.
Okay, so I, well, I didn't know if they did that, no. I went out and got digs and
I understand.
Information, there are no utilities, the phone line that goes up, I have no phone in my building whatsoever. The new phone line comes down my property line that they brought in from the back to my building. There are no easements on the hillside, and when you speak, uh, to the attorney, I just want him to know, there is no way that the public can use that hillside. If they can, bring their mowers. And mowers. Because it's impossible to mow that whole stretch of that, the hillside in front of three of our, our properties.
You understand that.
Well, he did, because he's seeing the public what the public have. Again, I go back, is to him, how much money do I keep taking out of my back wallet here, I've already spent time on this, how much more do I, surveys do I get to get all this? And the city comes back and says, well, I
Vacate it, you need to have
I understand, but you know what?
Not handwritten, not a just general right-of-way between.
Well, I guess as I, as I, as I read this, and I was told, as I was, went to the, the hearing the other night, and asked him, he told me to look this up myself, he didn't give me a copy. So I looked it up, and I read it very carefully. And I, and I filled it out just exactly, I can read the King's English, I can understand the King's English, and that's what I read.
You can read the King's English, and you can read the city form that needs to be filled out to vacate a property.
Just a second.
Okay, so, so the question is, I, I just want to, the attorney, I've been fighting this for five years with this whole thing that's going on. This can, every time I come here, it just gets kicked down the road farther and farther and farther, and it's gotta end.
He gave you a, he gave you a letter in May of twenty nineteen, two summer seasons ago, to fill out a right-of-way permit. And I would send to you, here's what you need to do.
The thing is, is I will not spend, I will not spend my money
So there's no hurry.
if I don't own the hill. Not one person in this room would spend that kind of money if they didn't own the hillside, and the city comes back. Mayor? You said not to plow my back road because I didn't own it. It cost me money to go back to the city records and find that out, and I plowed my road for two weeks, and the city should've been doing it, I come to you, and the city council, where's my money, are you gonna reimburse me? And you said absolutely not. I didn't even get an apology out of that. So as far as trust goes, I don't trust. And that's the reason in my letter, guys, that's why I wrote very specifically why I don't trust. You won't ask a gentleman here how this all happened to put us where we're at today.
That's not the issue.
That is an issue.
The issue is a slope.
Did Jan do what was told to him at the zoning meeting? He did one hundred percent of what he was told to. I would like to make a motion that we move forward and try and resolve this problem, and get this wall, I see no reason, all the council people can look at that hillside, there is absolutely no way you'll ever have any utility on it. And, uh, Dan looked down and looked at it.
Can't make a motion, because he hasn't had a, he wants to vacate, he needs to fill out the form, we need to have a public hearing, and that's when we make the motion.
The, the, Mayor, the
Can't make a motion tonight.
It says right here, the city, legal city board, I'm gonna read this. There are two methods for commencing a vacation, he's gonna talk on a motion based on a vacation. It says it right here in black and white.
Sit down, Jan.
Four fifths.
Done.
Mayor, we will be in
We will talk, we will be in court. I apologize.
This is exactly what I've dealt with you, Mayor, since you've been mayor, and you have not worked with us to do something to move something forward.
Jan, I wanna work with you, but I wanna work with you thus for the betterment of the city. And
Then pay me, Mayor, then pay me a bill for not pulling my vote.
I please let him speak.
For reversing me for what you've done to me. And start showing me, Mayor, and you don't show me, I've tried to work, I, I pay my taxes on time, I pay everything, I do everything, and I try to do something, and it doesn't do that. And maybe, maybe an attorney, and maybe me going to Homestead County and filing a lawsuit for that hill being moved over, that shouldn't have been done, because it was an il- illegal action of this council that did this.
That's enough.
Okay, timeout. It's obvious that this problem has existed for a long time. I defer to Mike. As much as I hate to, Jan, I know that you want this done tonight, but I do understand that we need to notify the neighbors, get permission from the neighbors, and we also need the legal description. So, here's what I'm gonna ask you to do to move this forward with me. And I will do this with you if need be. But I would like you to fill out this form that he's talking about here in the office. I will come with you, and we will do it together if necessary. With that, I also wanna see a legal description. We will go from there. We're gonna start right here at the bottom, and we're gonna just keep climbing that hill until it is gone. Fair enough?
If I, I wanna vacate, I wanna own the property.
Okay, so let's do it together.
Or you, Trish, I will, I will listen to you and say, you know what, but the thing is, I'll then have to go get a surveyor, and it's gonna be more money out of my pocket to survey that hill, it's, it's, again, it's costing me more and more and more.
Okay, I like that for
Jan, this is the only way we can do it. I'm asking you to work with me, not Ryland, with me as a representative of this city, I'm asking you to work with me. And we will work this.
The attorney said it don't have to be surveyed.
It does not have to be surveyed, we need a legal description, a proper legal description. You will most likely find that in your deed.
So.
Not the for the area that he wants to vacate.
Jay, or Joe, excuse me, I'm frustrated now, too.
Can I, can I?
Please?
Mayor? So, I, I think what you need to do is, it, it doesn't have to be surveyed, it just has, there has to be a legal description that a county recorder can record. Okay, so they have to be able to record something, if the court, if the city council were to just vote all in favor, say aye tonight, I don't know what would happen. I mean, I don't know how that effect is gonna affect the property, right? I mean, I don't think that's, I don't think you can do, I mean, I'm telling you not to do that, but I, you know, I mean, I don't think that's, I don't think you can do that. I mean, I'm telling you not to do that, but I, you know, that's all I can say about it. But I think what would have to happen is, there would have to be some legal description provided with the application. And then the, in city engineer would have to look at that, have to look at that legal description and the proposed use or the proposal, and then make an opinion to the city, which he's kind of already done. I mean, I'm reading this, and it's a fact issue. I'm not, I'm not saying you can or can't vacate property. I think you need to have a public benefit. And, you know, the city council's gonna have to make a resolution that they distribute property owners before a public hearing, at least ten days before, which we haven't done. Um, so you could go vote tonight and do that, I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know what I could do to help you report that at the county reporter's office, but, you know, I don't know. But at, at the end of it, at the end of it, you know, you're gonna have to make a finding of public benefit. And all vacation processes have, have a public benefit.
Can I make, I
I just, I, yeah, go ahead.
Hey, how come just come, you closed the roadway, what public benefit was it to the people to close that right of way except two people? I mean.
I don't know.
Makes sense, we're really tough.
That's not, we're just listening to you. I understand what you're saying, but that's not what we're
Well, it sure is.
Discussing what's on the agenda is the slope.
Where's the, sure is.
I, I
We can't, we're having a hard time.
I haven't reviewed any other issue other than, other than this one. Sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
So I, before, let me just pull something out here that is, I think, worthy of some discussion if we're gonna consider all the options here. And I can appreciate what Jan is saying about having a wall. I think, you know, there is, there is something that I think we should seriously give some consideration. And that is to, my concern is if, if Jan builds a wall, the VFW builds a wall, maybe Mike Time wants to build a wall across from him. So the, if we're gonna have walls, which I think is, would be a nice addition for the city, it could be considered a beautification project for downtown Orinoco. And I think people would appreciate it, is if the city would consider doing a feasibility study or to build a wall on the right of way, which is city property, to construct a wall from Jan or Herb's corner, wherever it is, all the way up through the VFW, and then across the street where there's another steep slope, which is weeds right now. But I think if we would have, and we offer, we, we give that some thought, I think that would help with enhancing the downtown. I think would give us a wall. We could still design the wall or whatever the alternatives would be from the feasibility study, that we could have a wall, maybe it's the same height as what Jan's proposing. But whatever it is, it would still allow for decent mowing. It's not a steep slope, but we, there could be some slope, but I don't think we're gonna build a twelve foot wall to make it flat, but the point is we could enhance that area by building a wall that looks consistent. And it helps the downtown appearance of the city itself. And I'd like to have that be considered as a possibility, too.
You know, mayor, that's all I've ever asked. I would put some, open the city board, no, that's all I've ever asked. What I was trying to tell you people is, that if you would, I can't afford, I'm retired.
Sure.
I, I can't, I can't afford. The point is, if you would move from the curb back six feet and start a wall, and you would lay the first two courses of those big stone wall, then I could pay for, I would pay for the other two on top of that. I'm not looking for a straight property, I'm looking for something that I can actually mow. If you did that, you don't have to put a sidewalk and cement down there, you can leave it grass. Then you could put your handicap parking signs out there, they would be legally done. It would enhance the gold rush people coming into Orinoco to be able to get out of their car on that side of the, of the road and be able to use it. The schoolhouse, they would be able, the new schoolhouse event center would be able to park down there. The people could walk across the bridge, look at the river, and go to their event and come back, and there would be parking, there's parking on both sides. It's a, it's a win-win situation. But again, I can't afford, I, can I, can I ask, he, he'll, for VFW, I'd like to have him speak about
No, we understand, VFW, you're not in a position
We're talking.
Okay, but that, mayor, when we talk about that, I can be reasonable, I can do things, but it has to happen this year to, to, to come down and do this because I can't, I can't do it anymore.
Well, that's, that's why I'd like to come back, have Joe, not, my idea would
Could be a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I mean, it ain't
Well, I'm just telling you to put the two courses up, and the reason I went up six feet is because it took the plant off my hillside, I can flatten it out, the, the forty-eight inches back for the first stone and the other one on there, and put it up there, and then I don't have to build the stones up. Two courses to, to go the distance I'm going is ten thousand dollars.
I think you're better off
So there's ten thousand dollars on that, and I, the VFW has a little more property. In fact, I was gonna pay for Herb's stones, the, the three or four that might be, start the hillside up and, and put it there.
You're better off keeping with Trish, 'cause you won't get it done, I'll guarantee you.
You'll send me a paper tonight, mayor, I won't interrupt your meeting, or you give me your paper tonight, I will work with Trish, I will fill that paper out. And I'll bring that back, and I, I hope to hold the council, I know you got two new members coming on, and that's why I want it tonight, because then I gotta start this whole thing over again.
Jan, I'm, thank you very much. So the one issue with vacating is that we lose control of the right of way. Whether it's utilities there, or we have new utilities thirty, forty years from now, all of a sudden we wanna do something, and we gotta work with the vacated property, and we can't, we have no leverage. We need right of ways, there's a purpose for right of ways, vacating right of ways is, 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 is just a bad deal. I would like to propose the feasibility of looking at a consistent wall as a city project. Depending on the cost, we have a capital improvement fund, which we could put towards it. There's also some possibility for some grants, I talked with Seda, there's some possibilities out there that we could go after some grant money. Whether it's through DED, uh, there's some beautification projects that different people have. But I think it's worthy of looking at this because it's a, we want something to look nice. And something that benefits the VFW as well, because they're not in a position to any, fund anything. And we can work with the city engineer regarding the utilities, because there is a water line coming across from Herb's place into Jan's property, and we need to work around the wall. Um, and we can do that working with our, with our projects, so I would like to propose that as being
The water line, mayor, for your information, is my water line, and that top, just down from the top of my hill, that connected, it goes right straight down. And it's on, it's on my, it's, it's this far in the road right away, the water line. It's straight down to the road because I hooked it up. And I had to bore it all the way to the back end of my building, so I know that there's only one with the water line, is, Herb does not have any utilities on that property whatsoever, and all the other utilities, mayor, come, and the easement in the back road, the gas line, and the phone line now all come in that, on the back road to my building. I'm just, I just, so you guys know this information.
We're, and I'd like to have Joe just speak briefly about, from his perspective of
Yeah, so in terms of the water, there is a water service, a one-inch pipe that comes from the water main, that's on the east side of Minnesota Avenue and crosses underneath the road, goes up to the top of the slope, that's where Mr. Tronson connected to it and tied into it, would be under the wall. In addition to that, um, based on the feasibility report and the discussions that we've been having, um, the property immediately south of Mr. Tronson's parcel is an undeveloped parcel, that one would be served with sewer and water as well. The only water remain available to connect to, um, that parcel is on, under Minnesota Avenue, so again, it would have to go under Miss, Minnesota Avenue and up the slope to that undeveloped parcel. So there is one existing pipe, another one proposed. Other things for the city council to think about?
Can I just ask you a really quick question? Um, are we, with this water sewer project, digging up any part of that, the west side of the road of Minnesota Avenue?
Um, what would probably happen is we would directional drill underneath Minnesota Avenue and up the slope. Um, and we would have to excavate at the end of the curb, or at the end of the pipe, near the property line, to install a curb stop. So yes, there is some excavation that would be necessary. And so the other thing to kind of think about when you think about those pipes, you know, typically, when you build a retaining wall, you excavate into the slope, you bury some, some of the blocks. That's, that's how these types of walls function. And so when you do that, you know, you potentially reduce the amount of cover on the pipe, you can, can create issues that way. Um, and if, of course, there is an issue with that pipe, whether it's tomorrow or in fifty years, very difficult to repair. Um, so from, you know, working a city right of way, there is always that issue. From the other perspectives, things that cities typically concern themselves about, you need somewhere to throw snow. You know, foul snow, snow goes up the hill. Reasons that right of way exist to the limits that they oftentimes do, um, that is one issue that needs to be contemplated. Another issue that should be contemplated as well is, you know, what if at some point in the future, this council or another council wants to put a sidewalk in that goes to Alice Park, and, you know, provides uh, the necessary facilities for pedestrians in that area to offload a vehicle or just travel, you'd want a six-foot wide sidewalk probably. And, you know, you would have to design and construct that wall to be able to accommodate that, and so if you build a wall up in the slope, well, that wall would be an obstacle to doing that. You'd essentially have to take it down and start over. Um, so, you know, there are a number of things that the city can and probably will at some point in the future use that right of way for. The right of way also provides for private utilities. So whether it's a fiber optic crossing, or a gas main, or something in the future, you have to give those people someplace to be. And just because there's not somebody within the corridor today, doesn't mean the need won't exist in five years or fifty years. There's a reason that, you know, we try to protect right of ways, that, those are real issues and real obstacles that this shit city should consider because they are, in my opinion, in the public interest.
Okay.
So the
Hold it, Jan, hold it. You have just presented all kinds of obstacles for Mr. Tronson. I challenge you to offer a solution to this problem, because at this point, what you're saying is that wall isn't a good idea. He's telling you he can't mow that right of way, so I wanna know where the solution is, because I don't wanna keep circling this bush.
Well, there are different, different approaches for this. The mayor threw out, what approach?
It was a wall, which you just said, no, don't do it.
Well, um, you probably end up lowering the water main that is, is there with that wall. Um, you would probably end up constructing a sleeve under the water main to house the future facility, right? You would make sure that that wall is designed appropriately to accommodate a future sidewalk. And yes, that, the reality is that the potential for, you know, the wall failing, or the city continuing to have to invest in that wall in the future is there. You would not vacate the right of way, so directional drilling or excavating um, private utilities behind the wall and within the right of way would still be possible. Um, so there are those solutions. Other solutions, if you don't want to go through a process and spend money on a wall, I think that, not I think, when the, when the slope was re-topsoiled, re-graded, and re-vegetated in a cooperative effort between the city and the county, the slope was seeded with a low main, mi- low maintenance mix that was intended to be mowed once or twice a year. So short grass, so short dense grass that's supposed to be mowed or burned once or twice a year. Um, that might be an option. Um, although all of the seeds that were intended to, you know, grow probably have died off, that would constitute that mix, you know, you, you probably got other seeds uh, or some of the less desirable seeds growing in that area at this point. Another option would be to come into that slope and install some type of riprap, so do some modest excavation, put a geotextile fabric down, cover it with rock.
The weeds, the weeds grow out of what you just asked. The grass that they did plant there, it grew up and grew back down, and you say you have to keep it mowing. When the Canadian thistles get this high on that, on that hillside, those are obnoxious weeds. Noxious weeds can't be allowed to grow because they continue on your whole hillside. There's all kinds of thistles and weeds on that hillside that, that are there. My sewer is in the back of the building when I bought the property, so the sewer line needs to come in the back because the tank, the holding tank I have for my building, the county and everyone else, that that's where that needed to go on that piece of property. And so the sewer needs to come in, so coming and drilling, I don't quite understand, maybe you can explain to me when you talk to me about the water main comes down, and I don't, I, I don't understand when you say the water main, there is no utilities o- o- on that hillside, the sewer needs to come on the road the backside, because that's where my tank is, and that's where the county made the tank go in, and that was the placement of the tank to do that. So, I guess the result is this, mayor, I will work with Trish and give me that piece of paper, because I already see now with Mr. Palin here, where he's headed, he's headed to say, don't do it.
That's gonna call more litigation.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I would like to pursue the feasibility report as well.
I would as well.
Yes, I think that that, at this point, feels the best.
Good option, it benefits everybody there, it makes us look, look like it's gonna be a nice professionally done job, not that Jan's law take care of what we really wanna benefit the downtown Orinoco with. It's no dollars out of his pocket, it's right of way, it's city property, and, um, we can have the, uh, Stan Tech come back with some suggestions.
What, we're talking in two years, a year, two years?
I'm talking about January, when we get some feasibility work done.
Yeah. Well, Joe was shaking to ten, it's like a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand, I mean, where could the city possibly come up with that kind of money?
Well, I wouldn't throw out that number. It, it's a significant number, and that's really what, you know, the extent of the wall has to be determined, that's what the feasibility report really looks at, right?
You know, we could do it in two phases, three, it all depends on the cost. And I'm sure there's some alternative designs. So I make a motion that we, uh, Stan Tech, Joe come back with a, a cost for a feasibility study in the January timeframe, a January meeting. For a second?
What, what does the feasibility study include? What do you want the feasibility study to include?
I think it'd be, well, right now, it's alternative of how we can enhance the, to reduce the slope of the bank, so it's easy to mow, easy to take care of. Is there something else I should say, Joe, that would, typically, like what you're looking for?
I, I, I think one of the things Lori asks is, you know, are we, are we simply talking about a wall? Or are we looking at different options?
I really, you know, I don't really see why, we got Minnesota Avenue across the bridge sixty feet. We got Minnesota Avenue on this side of the bridge a hundred feet, because the land was gave some, by some farmer so they could turn stagecoach around. I don't think we're gonna have stagecoats. So why, what is the purpose on one side of the bridge at sixty feet, why are we fighting so bad to narrow it down to sixty feet on this side?
Well, the truth is, if you look through the right of ways in Orinoco, um, there are a lot of hundred-foot and eighty-foot right of ways, as well as sixty-six-foot right of ways. And down, e- even in the downtown areas, so you do have that.
You know, there's not a straight street in Orinoco, and some streets used, like in front of Jan's probably, there's probably between his north property and the south property, there's probably two to three feet difference in the street where it fits with his right of way, so. We're not discussing giving up right of ways tonight, that's just, I'm not gonna do that, that's not an option.
So to Lori's question, though, what I was maybe asking, maybe what, maybe what you were asking is, is that really what we're looking at? Are we looking at solely a retaining wall, and if we're looking at a retaining wall, what's the limit of the retaining wall? Is it essentially that block? Um, is it some
It's, it's, in my impression, it's the hundred and seventy-five feet along the VFW and Jan's property. property, and another seventy feet on, across directly from the, uh, post office and Mark Keane's property. So it's about two hundred and fifty feet of.
So it includes four properties, it includes Herb's, Herb's property, Thompson's property, the VFW, and Mark Keane's property, all four of those.
My other question is, we talk about, you know, long-term sidewalks, the park, um, I mean, if we're looking at doing something, and we're thinking long-term plan, that should be included in the feasibility study, so that you can say, okay, no, I'm going to have to tear this road up in a year, what, what would work between now and then, or two years from now I have to do this, or we want to plan to put a sidewalk in, in twenty twenty-four, so let's build whatever it is we're building to include the ability to put a sidewalk in?
Right, I, I, yeah, that's, you know, a good point, and I wouldn't give you something that didn't include that type of forward thinking, because someday, somebody's going to want a sidewalk there, I would bet a hundred dollars on it. You know, it makes sense from lots of different perspectives, so if, if you're going to plan that type of infrastructure, you've got to design it to accommodate that, whether you build it day one, or, you know, in ten years.
But I guess maybe we should try and save everyone, Mr. Thompson came to the council and I'd ask about vacating, he's going to come back with the legal on vacating it, so I mean, if he can come to the council, why waste the time, or why waste taxpayers' money on a feasibility study of Mr. Thompson?
Because I don't know that that's the best interest of the community, because it's one, it's one property that we're then taking care of, the, and, and not getting the ability to plan for the future. So right now, this would fix Mr. Thompson's issue, but it wouldn't fix the issue moving forward for all of these other things.
And, you know, I think the greater question is, is, or the, the other question is, is, you know, you come, come, prepare the application, prepare the legal description, and then the question still comes up, do you meet the standard set forth in the statute of, does it, does it provide public benefit? You know?
You read my, if you read my.
I would suggest that, you know, there's some concerns, basically what I've kind of laid out here in terms of existing utilities, future utilities, existing pedestrian facilities, and snow storage. All of those are required, or roadway facility, and, and those uses, whether they exist today or, are required in the future, they might be, and so, you know, it's in the public's benefit to maintain the ability to make those improvements and to maintain those utilities, you know, and to continue to use the property, in my, my opinion.
Okay, sweet.
Joe?
Mike, you have a comment? Yeah, I mean, I just, I mean, my comment is that it would be extremely rare to vacate rightaway next to a street, for the reasons Joe is saying. I mean, you'd have to say that there's no public benefit, nor will there ever be a public benefit, to, to maintain a rightaway when the entire structure of Minnesota law is to provide for rightofways, because cities always need to use rightofways for those purposes you just stated. So it would be very rare to do that. Um, now, I'm not saying it's impossible, but you'd have to identify a public benefit, and then the league materials and the statute talk about pub, public benefit versus private benefit. Private benefit is for one homeowner, or landowner, or, you know, a small number of landowners, versus, you know, the general public of the city of Orinoco. So, I don't, I mean, I, I did read.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floors during the discussion. All those in favor of a feasibility study?
Riley.
Excuse me?
That never got seconded. Only one. It needs to be seconded. I'll second the motion in order to move forward.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's.
That's okay, I just want to be sure that we have it right.
So the motion is to, um.
But when the city really looks at where the pipes are located, they don't need a forty-foot-wide easement, they can vacate twelve feet of it and have a twenty-eight-foot-wide easement and still access the infrastructure. That's kind of what more where you would find, well, look, we still have an easement, we just don't need that extra part of the easement. So, I think it would be very, I think the feasibility study seems like a good idea, because, you know, you would, you have option, you know, if Joe came back in January with a proposal, like a, a proposal to do that, that study, and it would cost, whatever it would cost, and the city decides to do it, you would have options for you to go do something within the rightway. If you can't get it back, except for buying it, or, you know, getting an easement, which you, you know, there's no recourse to do that other than negotiating with property owners, multiple property owners, or doing a condemnation proceeding, so it's, it's, what you do in the rightaway and who owns the rightaway are two really different things, important to be clear about that.
All favor of the motion for consent agenda.
Seconded, we didn't have a second. Motion to adjourn.
Seconded, we couldn't even hear it.
Good night, everybody, thank you Nancy, thank you Carl.
Motion to adjourn, who made the motion?
Take your name tag with you.
Are there any motions for the agenda?
I motion.
I did it. I motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
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 Riley, please, I need support anyway. Thank you, sir.
So, Geraldine?
Yes?
I've got a city fee schedule.
Yes.
Yes. Was it dance permit fee?
Dance?
A dance permit fee, five dollars per single dance.
I love that's how it was before, I just changed that, eighteen dollars.
He said it was there.
I have never noticed that before, I don't know where it came from, but I am not dancing with anybody.
Fine with you then. Time to wait, David, fight it tonight.
I'm just suggesting that it might be.